So the today is March eighth, two thousand twenty-three. We're at the administration building, school committee conference room for the facilities and operations subcommittee. Do we have a roll call?
Mr. Harp?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Salute to the flag. Pledge your allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its essence, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The open meeting law, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. So today we have three items on the agenda. We're gonna take them out of order. We're gonna go to the discussion vote to refer renewal of the lease for the Fall River Youth Soccer Association, three point oh two. And we have a representative here. And Ken, do you wanna get into, just to be started off a little bit, or?
Sure, so we have the agreement from last year, a one-year agreement, that we, that the committee voted to make a one-year agreement as opposed to a five-year, which was what we originally thought we were gonna do, to see if there would be any changes within a year on the status of taking care of the field. There was some movement that the field was going to be maintained by the league. And obviously, COVID changed a lot of things, you know, for a lot of organizations as to, you know, funds and the amount of work that they could take on on their own. So we executed a one-year contract and we're prepared to do either or. Whatever works for Fall River Youth. But I do have a document that is included in your package, which is identical to the last one.
Yes.
Identical to the last one and, and the only difference is that I changed the date. So the new, the current contract expires in May, and this one picks up in May of twenty-three and runs to June of twenty-four. And then at that point, we will, you know, work on it again. Sorry, if you want. Yeah, yeah, no, yep.
Sorry.
Sure, no problem.
Any, no good.
So Kenny, it's accurate to say that the only thing that changed last time was we took over the cutting of the grass, right? For the, not this so much contract, but last year's contract, right?
Yes, so the end of the, exactly.
And it's staying in this contract. Okay.
Yeah, so when I, we're taking over, there's really, last year's and this year's, the date is the only change technically, yep.
Yep, I noticed that, and the, and the contract is, did everything go well with that?
We had no issues on, from our side.
No, no issues, and I'm here to just request the same field usage and the mowing, and we will take care of the nutrients and the sprinklers and things like that.
So everything's intact except for the weeds.
Exactly.
Okay, is there any other questions?
Yep. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve, sorry.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So this will go on the next agenda, which is gonna be on March twentieth for a full approval.
Twenty-eighth.
Okay, so for the next one item is three point oh one, the facilities and operations, for the update on the man murals. Ken, do you wanna go into it a little bit, and then we're gonna have the presentation?
Sure, yeah, so it's, obviously, the, we've had some changes at two ninety. Our roof, since the last time we talked, our roof has replaced. Our roof wasn't the issue, you know, we were concerned with that very much, as to what damage could possibly be done. The, some of the, some of the forensic work you had already done, Mrs. Roderick, as far as the initial way back.
The initial work, but subsequent to your work.
Yes.
Which was terrific, because when I first came before the committee in two thousand and fifteen, we were concerned with water damage. And that is alleviated.
Yes.
As a result of that, my efforts to get any funding after that through the CPC had been eliminated because the water damage wasn't there, all right? So the CPC position is that there is no danger. The question then becomes, we have a conundrum here, because we have a world-class WPA collection of artwork in a room that nobody goes into. And if they were restored, they still would not be seen. So to restore them, I believe is a waste of money. And the CPC sees restoration as restoring what's on the wall.
Right.
That's restoration. What I'm suggesting, and which Jackie Francisco also suggested in two thousand and eighteen, second hand out with my report on the Times, was that digital reproduction was recommended. The CPC does not see digital reproduction as restoration. By law, I mean, this isn't made up. This is guidance from the CPC in Boston that says restoration means this, reproduction means this. So digital reproduction is not going to be funded by the CPC.
Right.
And I'm recommending digital reproduction. Jackie Francisco is recommending digital reproduction. During the pandemic, I was able to sneak some people in, and I got the Blackburn Conservation people. They do cleaning, they do cleaning. At the time, I wanted to get an estimate of what it would cost to do cleaning, as well as digital. That was what Blackburn gave me that day. Just later on, I was able to contact Tri Color from New Bedford. And he came in, the gentleman came in, and he looked at what we had in the auditorium. And he said, digital reproduction will enhance what you have. You don't need to clean them. Why? Because the original assessment was that the murals are in excellent condition. Why? Because they're in an auditorium without any sun and temperature controlled. So we have a product there that's in good condition.
We just have to keep the lights off. And the weather out, and people out of it.
Yeah, that nobody sees. And if Dana Barnes was here tonight, she would tell you, as we've been talking, the great interest there is in these murals at the WPA level nationwide. Dana has her own WPA collection, right up here on the Art Association, and she's working with the Smithsonian. I've had interest from the Smithsonian, I've had interest from the Library of Congress, I've had interest from the State of Massachusetts. The bottom line is, Fall River has an art collection that is the largest WPA collection in the United States that nobody sees. And nobody can get into, and if you, and if you restore it, it's a waste of money. So I looked into the digital reproduction, and I got, I got Tri Color from New Bedford and Artopedia to look at this situation. Why did I look at those two companies and not just photographers locally? Because digital reproduction is a highly skilled process. These companies actually get certified to do this kind of work, and especially Tri Color and Artopedia, they've had experience doing large products, and our products are three thousand five hundred and fifteen feet, linear feet. Fortunately, the good news is that they're only one-third the size of New Bedford, which I'm gonna give you out tonight. New Bedford in two thousand and seventeen had this wonderful exhibit, which I attended. It was done in the nineteenth century. They've been restoring this for years. It's a canvas restoration, three times the size of what we have in the auditorium on Rock Street. When they finished the restoration, they did digital reproduction. Why? Because they can't carry around all this canvas, and they can't exhibit it. When I attended the exhibition, it was at the Kilburn Mill in New Bedford, and it was circular in the mill. It was up and down, up and down, because it was so big. So that's what New Bedford did. And I believe in looking at what other people have done. I mean, this isn't, this isn't my idea, this, this is your property. This is property owned by the City of Fall River. So New Bedford has done digital reproductions, I'm gonna give you these brochures, so you can look at the intense work that was done there. The closest that we can come to digital reproduction is Artopedia in Providence, Rhode Island. They're from Massachusetts, but the work was done for Rhode Island Historical Society. Also, they were able to do large-scale work, and I'm gonna hand this out to you so you can see what kind of work is done with digital. For example, this is the kind of scan that they did. One for Debbie. Chairman here. They did the scan, and you can notice in the footnote that it was twenty feet by fifteen canvas, seventy-two separate images. And what they do with imaging is take multiple images, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of images. Then they stitch them together to create this large canvas. So once they did that, of this, there are thirty-six, there are thirty-six pages to this, but I copied three to give you an idea of what, what was entailed. Once they did that, they did a digital restoration, and they created this beautiful product. So I'm suggesting that we look at digital reproduction, and that we look at this as a total product, not just canvas or print, because it's gonna be all different sizes. Once you do the digital work, you're in a position to change sizes. You could exhibit them at Durfee High School, you could create canvases, who knows, for the waterfront. I'm still looking for a building. So if I find a building and they want large sizes, you could actually create large sizes. Because these murals are telling the Fall River story. They're not only a legacy for the future, but they're telling the Fall River story, and they could easily be a tourist attraction. But in the meantime, digital reproductions can be created to teach at Durfee or any other place in the school system. You can create a slide presentation, you could do a book. It's limited, it's limited on what qualified subject matter people can tell me what to do, because I'm not one of them. Jackie Francisco is. Somebody who's in the artwork will be able to tell you what the whole range capability is of digital reproductions. So I come to this meeting tonight with the work that's been done already. I can tell you that this is the kind of support that we're getting in the City of Fall River. I have support from the Durfee Alumni Association. They ask me every month what the progress is.
It's been a lot of months. I was getting pretty caught with that question.
Yes, it's been a lot of months.
I am.
The Lower Highland Neighborhood Association is also a supporter, because the tech building is within their neighborhood. Dana Barnes at the Greater Fall River Art Association, Kathy Castro at the Fall River Art and Cultural Association, Fall River Preservation, Fall River Historical Society, Representative Carol Fiola, Senator Michael Roderick. I can also tell you that we have to learn about this together, because, not recently, just about recently, somebody said to me, what's taking you so long? All you're gonna do is take pictures. But we're not, we're not taking pictures. We're creating an art collection, basically, we're creating an art collection.
So this company, this Tri Color, do you mind if I ask, I don't mean to interrupt, I just have a couple of questions.
No, please do, please do, because we have new members on the subcommittee, and please interrupt me to ask any questions, because we've been doing this. Mr. Harp and myself have been doing this, right?
For almost ten years, apparently.
Mr. Coogan was there too, so we're, we're getting old together, so I just wanna make sure that everybody knows, ask any questions you like, what do you wanna know?
So clearly, this, this process has been going on for a little while. Now, Tri Color in New Bedford, that you mentioned, do they just take the photographs, or do they actually do the painting in a complete, complete restoration?
Yeah. No, they do it all, they do it all. And if you wanna see their work, they did the four-hundredth anniversary of Plymouth Plantation, or Plymouth the Tuxedo now. But they, they have a, if you go online, and you, and I'm sure you will, there's a whole range of products that they've done. This gentleman's been along, around for a long time. So he, he has a complete gallery and a list of products that he's done, and he's also done work for the New Bedford Women Museum.
Okay, and the space that it's in now, what, it's been mentioned that it's not being used, but I also, it was, it was stated in here that it was placed in an auditorium. So I assumed an auditorium is...
So it's, so it's on the walls of the auditorium, the walls are completely covered
Okay.
with these murals at two ninety Rock.
Correct. And the auditorium isn't used?
So that is closed door. No.
Okay.
No, it's, it's
Storage.
It's storage space.
Storage space.
Yes.
It, I mean, the seats are still there, wooden seats, old, the stage is a little rickety.
Sure. And what's going on there?
And nothing.
Okay, and we don't see anything in the near future?
Well, I, I, you know, after listening to Joyce
Yeah.
with, it's not a restoration, but the auditorium is, but the auditorium is.
It's a reproduction.
So the, you know, the bells go off that at some point, maybe we should seek preservation money to take care of the auditorium. Because that would be a restoration.
That would be restoration.
As in itself, in itself, outside of this, because at that point, the natural look at those murals that are there would be available.
When that happens, are you prepared to open to the public?
Well, we would, we would, we would have to have hours, I mean, like everything else, but, I mean, there's a lot of stuff at Durfee that people wanna come see, and we let them in. I think that that, and I'm talking about, Mrs. Ponce and I probably won't be here, but I don't wanna speak for her, but we're talking about
As I retire.
It takes us a couple of years.
Sure.
So the preservation, you know, you've been to, you've been to CPC enough to know.
Yeah.
And I sat on that board for a long time. The process is like watching paint dry.
Well, look at how long it took me to get the roof.
For a good reason. For a good reason, right, exactly.
But you had MSBA.
MSBA helped us with the roof, that's a six-million-dollar project that made that all happen. So I, I agree that to see it in its natural state is not gonna happen for a long time. So this is a good alternative to allow people to actually see what they can't see, the real thing.
Yeah, it's sort of like a traveling
A traveling show, exactly, right.
Exhibit, that you could move around.
Right.
What does it cost?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
That was my next, my first.
That was my next question.
That's what New Bedford did, because they can't, people can't see that canvas collection.
Okay, originally.
And if they try to, and they try to exhibit it, it's going to fray, it's going to damage.
Which is what, what we have.
They do that with a lot, a lot of art pieces, right? They keep the, the real ones protected, and they show the fakes.
Yeah.
How much, do you know how much something like, something like this costs, this digital restoration?
I don't, I, I don't, because I, I know Mr. Pacheco knows the process. I imagine it has to go out to bid.
It does, it does.
And then we'll know, we'll know, we'll know from that process what would, what amount of money we're dealing with. Because I think that amount of money will also depend on what we want. We want, if we want just canvas at a certain size, if we want, I, I want the hull bill of ox at this point, because if you're gonna do it once, you're gonna, you're not gonna do it again. You know, if you're gonna do it this time, I won't be around the next time to do it the next time.
But once we did, so correct me if I'm wrong, but once we, once we did, once we digitize it, it's digitized, right?
We have it.
So at that point, we can make a decision as to the size of it, and then how, yeah, wherever it's gonna, if it's mobile.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if we decide to digitize it a second time, we already have the document. So I'm guessing
Exactly. Exactly.
The cost is upfront to get it done once, and then after that, it's just reproducing the document.
So Ken, what do we have to do, make a motion to go out for bid, or is there a step you have to?
I'd say we, obviously, it's a referral.
Yeah.
Right.
But that we go to the full committee and see if they want to explore what it would cost. Now, I, I, we can make some, you know, phone calls to different groups to see, for instance, what was that worth?
There's a whole list here.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why I duplicated this, because Paige, when you open this brochure, there's a list of how New Bedford did it
Yeah.
with the, with the support from various organizations.
Right.
But I can also give you some hope from what I've been able to learn. One of the funding opportunities, especially when you have digital, could be through the library's system, could be through the library funding. Second bit of funding is digital Commonwealth. Digital Commonwealth might even go for the whole thing. Why? Because digital Commonwealth is the State of Massachusetts digital library. So if you're looking at specific funding, like Dana did for one or two, three pieces of WPA artwork, that's one thing. But if you're looking for digital Commonwealth, they're looking at the whole ball of wax. There's NIH, there's the National Institute of Humanities, locally. We could look at one of our distinguished alumni, who might be willing to have his name on a collection of artwork.
Wrong person.
But I mean, as far as we're talking about going further, I mean, we said like refer it to the full body, but maybe, do you wanna, I don't know, maybe get more information, table it, and then
What did you suggest the budget would cost?
Well, what I'd like to do is, if you've been
Table it, and then
If you wanna table it here, or if you wanna just refer it to a specific, like if you did it to the April meeting as opposed to the March meeting,
You'd have time to have the information.
It gives me a month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, to have some information and an idea, because it would be nice to have a ballpark for you.
Right.
Right.
So that we could have something, you know.
I'd like to refer
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be rather than that.
I think that's fine, so why don't we make a motion for a part of the April meeting?
That would be great, that's April tenth.
Second.
Tenth, tenth.
Second.
Motion seconded, and roll call?
So what are you looking at for April again?
We're gonna, we're gonna present this with a referral to the full committee.
Okay.
And then the full, yeah.
Okay. So we can't really look into how much this digital stuff's gonna cost until we're all together and agreed with. Right. So we're not gonna refer it to March, because it doesn't give Kenny enough time to dig up those costs, so we're gonna give him a month.
My guess, my guess is looking at the City of Fall River website and the various breakdowns of purchasing. I think it's over a hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah, I would imagine it's gonna be, if it was two seventy-five, just to clean it.
Yeah. Well, I mean
But who knows?
We don't know, because
Look, it's hard, I think, I truly believe, it's, we have an, it's not even, if we should, we have an obligation, we have an obligation as citizens of the world to protect history, in my opinion, and certainly to protect art. So it's just, I think about, this is the first I've heard of this, but I think it's just, this is the first step. Let's say, I think that digital is a great idea, because the reality is, we don't have the ability, right, to fix that building, and if we could, that would be amazing, if we could rent it out, you know, for people to, to view, that would be great, but the reality is, if it took ten years for this to get this far, I mean, I'm not gonna put, you know, all my faith in that, so I think this is a good step, so we'll discuss it in the April committee, and hopefully, the rest of the committee will agree to go forward and, and get some bids out and see
That sounds good.
if this possible.
And also, and also too, um
It could start better than the next ten years.
And also too, I'm glad that you and I are back on, on this, because I do remember, we were trying to deal with this, and then I kinda took a hiatus from the school committee, and then I came back.
Look, it's still here.
And now, and now we're still, we're still trying to work on it, and I know we've gone back and forth so many
I've been longer than you, Stuart.
We've gone back and forth so many times on this, and I'm glad that, you know, this is gonna be something that Kenny can put together for us, and then we can hopefully see what the full committee says on April.
Actually, it's not just you, it's, Mr. Pacheco's been there since day one.
Yeah.
Day one, when I first went to the CPC over the perceived water damage, that's, that's what set me off.
And also, Mr. Coogan has been involved.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So we made the motion, did we have a roll call?
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Well, I'm gonna give you these, New Bedford brochures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, like I said, when you opened this, I folded it specifically, so you could see the kind of supporters that were involved in getting this together, major supporters, including foundations, trust funds, what have you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your hard work with this.
So on the, the next item on the agenda is the reorganization, job descriptions.
Sure. Let me just give you one more piece.
I'm sorry, Ken.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
What do you?
I'm just gonna have these, I just got these three, just these three.
I had envelopes too, if you didn't bring one.
Oh, no worries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
School teacher, right?
Yep, that's right. Take it out of you.
Can't get over that, right?
That's right.
Can't get over that. Gotta be prepared, bring this stuff with you, please. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you. So we've attached seven job descriptions, and on the packet
Thank you.
That that Deb just handed out, there's two charts, log charts. One is current.
Ken, there was copies.
I'm sorry, yeah, I have ready, but one is current, and then one is proposed. So the first one is current, and the second one with, with red text, that is proposed. So if you look at, if the current dot Um, so if you look at, if the current document, um, one of the things I wanted to highlight was, on the top corner, it says director is responsible for the department. So if you look, each department that has a, a dot in it, so if you look at the first row, the, the above the center line, um, you'll see distribution. That was under one director. Facilities usage was under the same director. Custodial services was under the same director and safety and security under the same director. So the responsibility for that one director, um, was for the majority of the employees we have. Um, and the problem with that is, is that, that awesome responsibility of all of those employees and the work that comes with that. Um, is a daunting task and, um, a recipe for disaster or burnout, however you wanna put it, um, for that particular person. And, um, the idea of the reorg is to break the system down into manageable portions. And take away any department that looks like it can't be managed as a separate department. Now, again, on that first page, these items that are above the center line. Um, the school resource officer, for instance, it's a direct report to me technically, but it really isn't. Resource officers are all controlled by the police department. They answer to the superintendent on day-to-day stuff, they would answer to me. Um, and not answer to me, they would report to me as to what's going on. Um, so that is really not gonna change. Distribution, again, was currently under the responsibility of environmental, uh, services, that whole division. And it was there only because there was no place else to put it. So it stood under that one person. The supplies were technically going to teaching and learning and going to custodial. So it's, it's both sides of that, that one distribution center, but it doesn't fit in either one of those. So as we move on to the pages, we'll, we'll show where all that stuff lands. The facility manager is a brand-new position that was in effect for a little over a year. It helped us open Durfee, that person was there every day, um, doing punch list items. Uh, taking care of any kind of, um, nuances that were, that came up during construction. But also, um, stuff that, looking forward, would need to be addressed by, uh, the different divisions. That position should stay, but that was a direct, um, answer to the COO. Facility usage, um, as we grow, our opportunities for rentals, we're doing two fifty, three hundred thousand a year in rentals. Um, but that part of the, of the job, um, or the organization is growing. And, um, with the new facilities that are being built at Durfee and the opportunities at the new Durfee for rentals, I see that number, you know, growing over the years to either double or triple to what it is right now. We do get all the requests, we're just not ready to take that next leap yet because, you know, the fields are brand-new, not finished yet. And when they do get finished, we'd like them to be Durfee use first and then everyone else after that. Um, so we're, we're still working on that, but that position, again, is under that environmental person and the double duty. Served by that position. It was a clerk who did the regular work, the day-to-day work for all of those departments and on top of that, did the facility renters. So we worked out some flexible times that person could look at things on Saturdays, go to do rental, show them what they have to do, what they can and can't do. But again, it became a situation where it's a lot of work for that one person to do. What we're saying is maybe we pull some duties out of that position in the new reorg and give that person a little more time to do the facilities work. Because as it grows, the need for those extra hours here and there on a flex schedule is gonna come into play. And the last, um, and the last piece of that, um, is, um, the, um, groundskeepers that currently sit under me. Um, they used to be part of a, the engineering department, which was facilities engineering. Um, a gentleman, um, Mr. McCluskey ran that department and picked up a few of those pieces that were out there. That job was eliminated, I wanna say in eighteen, maybe seventeen.
Seventeen.
So that position no longer existed and it got pushed over to, again, people in the environmental section. So one more chunk of people was added. So if we stay in this piece for one more minute, and that would be the director of maintenance. The director of maintenance was a position that we added last year, in March, I think. And that position now has seventeen full-time employees. The plumbers, the electricians, the carpenters, the painters, um, are all sitting in that department, HVAC. That department is not going to change in the new reorg, so it's staying as a maintenance department. And basically, I look at that maintenance as building, structure, that's the maintenance, building structure, building maintenance.
Trades, tradespeople.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, licensed trades, um, in two different categories. And the rest of these items are all current. So all of these employees on that first page are all current employees that we have in the quantities and under the, either union or S non, uh, titles. If you flip to the next page, and then the piece on the back is just a narrative of what this reorg, um, looks like. But the difference, obviously, between the two is that the workload is evenly distributed, or I should say more evenly distributed, um, across the board. The items that would stay without a director and would be direct answer, uh, to the COO would be the distribution piece. Cuz again, I don't feel it fits under one of the other pieces. So it would answer direct, the facility person at Durfee, again, would answer direct. It's kind of a, um, a position that is working with the principal on a day-to-day basis for anything that the principal, um, feels that needs changing. And then I would meet with that person, uh, to go over whatever, uh, the school needs were. It'll also be a pi- pr- a position now that the, the bugs, so to speak, are worked out of the new building, that this could become, um, a more district-related position. Where if we had issues in some of the schools, it would be one more set of eyes to work with the maintenance director or the custodial director to, um, to troubleshoot, uh, different issues. The school resource offices, again, they're just reporting, they're not necessarily under the, the COO, but they, they do fit under the facilities and operations. And the last one is the facility usage. Um, again, no director, just that person who would take care of all of our, uh, our usage and rentals. And then the directors, um, below that are, uh, the maintenance directors, so seventeen full-time positions, no changes there. We do have some vacancies in maintenance. Uh, some of the, um, skilled trades are, are more difficult to fill. Uh, some of it is, is, um, the market, the market is just so good, um, outside of, uh, municipal and, you know, government. That, um, these, these skilled trades are in, in high demand and very difficult to pull them away from the dollars that are in the private sector. Um, we'll be working to try and, um, and figure out how we build, um, the interest in that area. Director of custodial services does not exist today, that was that one timer that covered everything. So that's a new position, um, and then the assistant of, you know, director of custodial services, that's another new position. Now, the director of environmental services had an assistant, an assistant director of environmental services. That position became a catch-all, that position became the person that I relied on to do my triage of all maintenance before we hired Manny. That position was never filled after the person retired, two years ago.
Two years.
Two years ago. So in the, in the, uh, custodial department, we would be looking to add those two administrative positions. We currently have a second shift supervisor, which would remain, and then the, the rest of the items, uh, stay exactly the way they are. The next item over is, uh, director of transportation, so we currently have a coordinator of transportation. Um, and then we have two clerks and four couriers. So it shows as a position, a new position, however, there is a position that is there now, it's a coordinator. Um, we believe that the position has grown in size based on the amount of buses we're using, but also on the services that we're being asked to provide. Uh, and, um, the dollar amount for that particular department has grown three or four times what it was, um, when we, um, when we changed over with the new schools. So we do a lot of transporting now, uh, and that budget is, is grown quite a bit. The next, um, position, again, a position that doesn't exist, that was under the envelope, uh, under the umbrella, I'm sorry. Of, um, the environmental, uh, director, and this would be a new position. And the, um, the changes under that position, this is safety and security only, so the sole responsibility would, would be to work with the CIO. On some of the safety, um, programs, cameras, um, access, um, items, it's like that. Also, um, to, uh, work on bus safety, uh, and other things that we have to do. All of the training, the Alice training and different training in the schools would fall under this director. We're looking for, um, nine full-time security officers. This would put us with a security officer in every building and one floater that we could use, um, as a spare, uh, to take care of, uh, some absences. When we have a need in a specific school now, we can send someone in. We do have a couple of, um, security officers that are working in elementary schools. And, um, this would allow us to put Durfee back to its full staff, which is where we would take those officers from now, uh, and put them in these other locations. But that would bring that department up, um, to a minimum of one person in every building. And then the SRO's strategy is still the same, we have two at Durfee, we have all of our middle schools covered, uh, community schools are covered. And then we have, um, a floater. Each of those groups take a little bit of schools, a little bit of load of the schools that are next to them. So, um, that's the safety and security side. The next piece is, um, director of nutritional services, so that person is a private sector person. Um, that person is not an employee of the district. Um, and then the next item down is the assistant director, again, a private sector position. Uh, and then we have two supervisors full-time that work for the district. I'm asking for one more supervisor for nutrition, and this one is to work with the, um, utility workers. So this would be a supervisor of all, the sanitation side of nutrition, cleaning the kitchens, kitchens and cleaning the cafeterias. This would be a supervisor that would bounce around, would also train those utility workers, which is a piece that's been missing. Um, and, um, be able to provide guidance on, on what needs to be done and what doesn't need to be done. We currently have five full-time utility workers. I'm looking for five additional utility workers. One of the utility workers out, I do not have a replacement. And in the kitchens that have, that are cooking kitchens, we need somebody there for the full day, not part-timers. So it would really tax our part-time, um, group to the point where, um, we would be leaving some schools out to overtime. So this will help us in that respect, but it'll also give us the opportunity to have some leeway. Um, the, um, we have the, the other items in black, forty-nine full-time positions. I'm looking for five more full-time cafeteria employees to work on the food service side. And those employees, again, would be used when needed. With a total of a hundred and forty-six part-timers and forty-eight full-timers. Anytime there's an absence, that position usually stays unfilled. We push the part-timers wherever we can, but a lot of our part-timers are there and they will stay part-timers because that's all they want. They want their four hours a day, three hours a day, wherever, wherever it is, some people work ten hours a week. So it's tough, it's not the same as the custodial side of part-timers, it's a different group of people that like the hours that they have and those are the ones they wanna keep. So there is, um, some, quite a bit of, of, um, additional positions within the nutritional, uh, side of the house. And the last, um, column is new, so the last column is director of campus services. So we are spending close to eleven million dollars on fields at Durfee. Between the eleven million dollar investment and the, um, landscaping around the new building, which we haven't had to take care of because it's been under contract through new construction. Um, it's a major undertaking. And Durfee looks very good and the landscaping looks very good, but it's not gonna stay very good with four employees. Um, and to be totally honest, the science behind taking care of the, the, um, turf fields is just that. It is not, um, a typical landscaper's job, it's something that they need to be trained in. It's something that we would have to send people for that particular training. It's equipment that needs to be purchased, some equipment is coming with the work, with the, uh, projects that are running right now that we've built into the construction projects. So some of the new equipment is already gonna be there waiting, but without the additional employees, it's gonna be very difficult. The goal for this department is to take more and more of the landscaping work for the individual schools away from custodians. To allow custodians to stay inside the buildings and do that work. Right now, all those custody, all the buildings that have, um, good-sized areas around them, that work is done by the custodians. Most of it that's touching the buildings, the big fields, we do take care of with, um, the landscape crew, uh, and the groundkeepers crew. But that, we're hoping to change that so that the custodial piece will be front and center for the custodians to do. And they will no longer have to deal with that outside work. If you notice all of the new buildings, um, where they used to be, um, mulch and some landscaping, it's grass. Because we don't have the ability to get all of that work done. And you, we can't do that work with four people and it's a lot of work for custodians to do that on top of what they have to do. So the goal would be to grow this department to a point where they take care of all the landscaping for the district. And I say that, the goal, because, um, being on the city side, I dealt with a park department. Fifteen employees, seventeen employees, a hundred and seventy-six acres of grass to cut, three rainy days in the summer, and you're not cutting grass and you're not taking care of things. And it's no different on this side. We're over a hundred acres of, of grass to cut when we total up all the schools and for four people to do that and do the other work that they have to do. So this outside work, this campus, um, department will also take care of the outside trash barrels. Will take care of the maintenance and the parking lots. Will be, under their work would be the striping of the lots. They may not necessarily, may not be for these eight employees that we're talking about, but it'll be under that director. So that director will have responsibilities, um, based on that work, the exterior of the building work, um, but not touching the building. So parking lots, uh, sidewalks. Right now, the custodians do all of the snow removal. At Durfee, it's a monumental task, there's an awful lot of sidewalks, a heck of a lot more than there ever was at the other building. This work is also work that the custodians are going to continue to do where they can. But the groundskeepers will have the ability, will have the equipment to do some of this work, um, to lend them a hand, um, with the three or four miles worth of sidewalks that we. three or four miles worth sidewalks that we have at the new building. And uh the job descriptions without going over them one by one unless you'd like to, are um are basically very unique in the work that needs to be performed by each one of the directors. Um, but it is very um it is very equal in um what we're expecting of them. We're expecting them to evaluate their employees, we're expecting them to um provide professional development to all the employees. Um, there's um, there's a lot of things that they're gonna be able to do that we couldn't get done with such a small group of um of administrators um that we have to deal with.
Is there a, open it up to any questions?
So Kenny, what kinda sticks out first?
Yes.
What kinda sticks out to me is um the the campus services.
Yep.
And how small the departments wanna be in comparison to these other departments with a hundred and seventeen, two hundred and sixteen, um even forty-two with safety and security. I don't know how to say this without getting into details, but salary-wise, like how do we
Well.
Support paying somebody with eight staff members the same kinda salary that has a hundred and seventeen and a hun- two hundred and sixteen?
Well, I would look at, I would look at, again, and I as as we were putting this thing together, the one thing that the one thing that um I say looks different than most of the other parts of FRPS is that some of these are specialized pieces. So if you look at the supervision in a regular building, you have your principal and you have vice principals and you have deans. So the principal's role is to oversee that whole thing. So I would say that my role here is that principal and I'm overseeing all of these departments now. Again, without going into detail, there's well over three hundred employees here. Bigger than any department we have. But the salaries are not comparable. I don't understand why, cause I'm sitting here. What I'm saying is is that the salary is not based on employees, because if there was, things would look totally different in FRPS. The complexity of things is is what things have to be based on dollar-wise. This person may only have to evaluate eight at the beginning, and I may come next year and say I need two more. Maybe only ten. But the complexity of the rest of the work that that person has to do, the planning, the fields, the constant testing, the G-max testing, which is new. To be sure that the fields are safe for our kids to to play on, to know when that stuff has to happen. To have the repairs done on all of these fields as we go along. We do have the Durfee complex, but we also have pus that is an artificial surface. We're hoping to build fields at Morton, um you know, at Talbot, I'm sorry. We have two more fields to build at Durfee, grass fields. All of that stuff has to be maintained, this crew is the is the crew that's going to do the 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 uh the line painting, the striping in these in these uh different facilities. Uh, and be sure that they're ready for game day with the with the ability to have artificial surface. Rain is no longer that big factor that we always had with the with the grass fields. But we still have maintenance to do on those fields after so many hours um of what needs to happen on the fields. Um, it also encompasses, you know, the taking care of the scoreboards, or taking care of the bleachers, or taking care of all of that work that's outside of the building. Will there be some inter-departmental, you know, work going on? Absolutely. Nutrition's gonna have to help with the scoreboard, but the person who's running this department is gonna have to plan their work well, especially knowing that you are gonna have some bad weather days that you're not gonna be able to work and how are we gonna work around that? Where this manpower is gonna be? And how are we gonna take care of sixteen buildings when we're only taking care of four now? That's a big change for this group as to how much they're gonna do. Whoever leads this group is gonna have to be very good at their job. He or she will have an awesome responsibility, knowing they got an eleven million dollar investment right off the top to take care of, and it's a showpiece, and it's used all the time. So I I look at, I don't know, I don't know if it's equal because if we're gonna count heads, it's definitely not. I agree with you a hundred percent, it's not. I just, I look at maintenance and I say the amount of work that maintenance has to plan is no different than this one here, but it's a specialty. Okay, there are only two people in the district, three counting one of the plumbers, that has the ability to plan some of the work that's gonna go on this summer. And it's a specialty. So he's he's only doing seventeen when you look at those other ones. But the work is specialized, and the work is is critical and the work is very expensive. And I equate that along with campus, along with the security side. We've invested millions of dollars in equipment, cameras, Turfee alone, the work that we're doing across the district. Those positions are not gonna necessarily, can't necessarily be based on the amount of people that they supervise. It has to be based on the size and the complexity of the work that they have to deal with. And and that's the only, the justification putting this together um is what I used. I I I need to see that these are specialties. Now, I'm not saying that each and every one of these people make the same amount of money, I I think that we give it a range, like we do most other jobs. Because our principal at Durfee is not being paid the same as a principal in one of our other schools. For a reason, you know, because the the complexity of running Durfee High School is a lot different than it is from running a smaller elementary school or or a small element, um a middle school. But it, there is a certain amount of talent that the person has to have regardless of the size of the building. Um, and again, the amount of of employees on each one of these, it varies quite a bit, I look at nutrition. But the bulk of nutrition people are part-timers. And their hours of the day are pretty compact, you know.
And no evals either, right? No evaluations for part-time?
Uh, no evals for part-time.
Right, that's right.
So when you're, I mean, I, again, these, this is the big ask.
But I mean, obviously, the person who has a hundred and one people under him, they're not responsible for doing all those evaluations.
So if you look at that, if you look at that department, we have a director, we have assistant director, that's the only department that has an assistant. And then we have a second shift. So you'd be looking at that group.
Should be setting up evaluations.
Thirty, thirty, thirty-four, whatever, however way it works out, they would be bringing that number into some control.
The supervisors do not eval, right? Just the directors?
The supervisors will, yes, not, yes.
I'm in, I'm sorry, I'm in a nutritional.
But nutrition, the nutrition director is not an employee of us.
Right, you know, I know that.
Like, so, so we would be doing, they would be doing the evals, the supervisor would be doing the evals.
Right.
And the the nutrition director obviously would have a seat at the table. Will not be doing the eval, it needs to be done by an employee of of the district.
So supervisor, this is the only department that a supervisor would be doing the evals and that's?
Exactly. A supervi- well, the third shift supervisor and the custodial side would be doing it.
How many, I'm I'm now bouncing back to to custodian, how many in the second shift?
The second shift is the largest shift we have. So it would be two-thirds of the force of the custodial staff is on the second shift. But that second shift supervisor would not take that whole load. So when it comes eval time, that that assistant director needs to step up. The assistant director's job, the way I see it, would be that person who's going to um maybe not necessarily have that start at the same time as the director. Maybe it shifts a little bit so that they can pick up two or three hours of the second shift so that they can get to know those second shift employees and give the second shift supervisor a hand when it comes time to eval.
How many second shift employees?
Two-thirds of that number, yeah.
You said two-thirds of the one seventeen?
Yeah, right.
What is it?
It's like a sixty-five.
I'm gonna say about sixty-ish.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Um, sorry. So, in in the uh job descriptions, I'm gonna bounce over there in a minute, if you don't mind.
Yep, sure. Nope.
Um, it just, I only found in one of the job descriptions, uh it it was um it mentioned supervisory experience, and that was on the director of maintenance. I didn't really see a lot of supervisory, under the uh required qualifications aspect. I didn't really see supervisory experience. And um I kinda think it's a big deal to have that on there.
Agreed.
That was supposed to be on there.
And it was an oversight, yeah.
It's gotta, it's gotta be a typo, uh because we talked about that in a meeting when we worked with this.
Yeah.
Right, and and I mean.
Yes.
And and it just didn't travel over, that's, I take responsibility.
No, no.
And also, Kenny questioned, so it's gonna be on there, right?
Yes. Yes, yes.
So it's gonna be on there. So um, who, I I I saw a lot of monitoring uh time, right, overtime?
Yeah.
Who approves the overtime? Is it you?
So the individual director would approve it if it's a regular if it's a regular event, so for instance, an overtime situation that's not related to work, that can't be done because of um maybe absenteeism. So let's just say it's a an event on a Saturday for a rental. So that overtime would be part of the rental, I would see that piece when it comes through. So-and-so is renting this building, we need a um a security person, we need two custodians and we need a groundskeeper. So those items would be put into the log as overtime needed, it would be bid out to see who gets it. And that would be approved as part of the project and paid for.
Right, what what does bid out mean?
Um, the opportunity to work, so the opportunity to work that event.
Can you explain that process? Does it go with the order?
It goes, right, it goes in order, so if you got it today.
You can't get it.
It it'll be the next, right.
And it's all done fairly.
And and what we've, what we've also it's, I I want, I don't wanna say it's even because a place like Durfee has so many,
Right.
you know, that by the time you get through with Durfee, the list of people, that work would stay in-house until it, they couldn't do it. But Durfee has enough events that eventually outside people from other schools are gonna get that work. So that's how, that's what I mean by the bid process. It's not automatic.
So.
But it does come through, it does come through on the workload, we have three openings. And I would get a phone call from a supervisor saying, how do you wanna cover this? You know, do we wanna bring part-timers in and give them each four hours to make up, you know, at least two?
But you have to say.
But it doesn't say, yes, it's not a, it's, no, it's not, we do have to say, yes.
Okay.
And and with an assistant director, obviously, the idea would be to um teach them, show them, have them follow a procedure that's very easy for the director, the assistant director, the um night supervisor, and by the time it gets to me, have an understanding that this is the process, we're doing it this way all the time, so there's never a question, okay? I would say that eighty-five percent of the time it's happening right now, that way, it needs to be a hundred percent.
Right, so question, seeing the majority, right, so we're saying two-thirds, okay?
Yeah.
Is this second, I'm sorry, this assistant of custodial services that you have this new position, is that something that is gonna be foreseen as second shift?
No, that that is strictly an assistant. So basically, you're gonna have, you're gonna have the director who's gonna work the regular seven to whatever day. You're gonna have the assistant that we're gonna look at shifting or touch so that they have some overlap on the second shift, and then the second shift supervisor is strictly second shift. And they would work, again, they may have a little overlap with the first shift, just because by contract, the seniors are all on the first shift. By design, by their design, um and we've talked about how we might wanna work on that, you know, during negotiations, but the first, the the senior custodians are on the first shift, so it's nice to have a transition from that first shift to second shift. Now, you're gonna have the assistant director, but we do have fifteen, sixteen buildings they're gonna get to.
Right.
So it would be nice if both of those, that assistant overlaps to the second and the second overlaps to the first a bit, so that we can make sure that the contact is made with that first shift senior as to what didn't get done during the day, whatever reasons it couldn't get done during the day, and try and fit that all in.
And the super, that that second shift supervisor, uh are they hands-on or are they traveling around?
They are. They travel around, they're not, they're not a, they're not like a working form, no, 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 they do train.
They're not hands-on, cleaning, a working form, okay. Right.
So they would train, we have a new person coming in on the second shift that we would train them. That person would be that person training them, or the assistant, or the director, depending on, you know, the need.
Okay, Ken, so what do we, uh, are we looking to tonight refer this, or do you wanna?
I would like it referred.
Okay.
Um, again, we will make those corrections, whatever corrections
Okay.
that need to be made on the um, on the drafts.
Yeah, because the the ones, so the ones you just gave us tonight, uh uh the same document?
Yes.
With, should I say all the bullet points are the same, it's it's just a different format?
They're, yeah, they're 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 different.
The ones you got tonight are the most current ones.
Yes.
But they're different, so I need to go back, it's not just the format.
Oh, I thought it was just the format.
And the, and and bullet number.
No, there's some bullets.
There's some bullets that are different, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Bullet number three on the maintenance job description should travel to the other, that's the one that didn't get carried over to the others, I'll I'll fix that.
Which one, which one, man?
Fix a couple of other things.
Now, I'm confused, I just, to make it as a range.
That's the one that talks about experienced supervising in a collective bargaining environment with a number of years preferred. It's in the maintenance directive's uh.
Right. Yeah, one of them in 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 the ones that I was always looking over.
This is the old one, right?
We'll correct it.
The one that's two pages is the, is the old one.
The one.
The one that's um double-sided is the one that I handed out today.
Double-sided.
Okay, alright, perfect, yeah. So the one on the double pager, the mention.
The one that has both sides, that's a new one.
Right, well, the, yeah, no, I got that, but it doesn't, so so let me just ask, uh there's uh three or more years of managerial experience with a collective bargaining environment. That's not put back on here, the new one.
On which one?
Uh, sorry, maintenance, sorry.
Under required qual- qualifications, it's not bullet number three at the top.
Oh, there it is, okay, it's just ordered differently, okay.
Correct.
Sorry about that.
We need to clean up the language about the managers and managers' overtime as needed and ensures equitable distribution of overtime. That's in the maintenance, but it's not the same language in the others, so that needs to be fixed.
And also too, what, uh, what Larry was talking about as far as eval evaluations, Tom?
That that language travels across, but I'll make sure it's the same.
Yeah, okay. Any motions on the table?
Motion to refer?
Is there a second?
Uh, a second.
Roll call.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
To March.
Ms. Larabee?
March, wait, to March?
Twenty, March, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Perrow?
Yes.
Uh, any new business? No new business, uh, may or motion to adjourn. Do you have a second, second, uh, roll call?
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larabee?
Yes.
Ms. Perrow?
Yes.
Have a good night, thank you, everyone.